So good to be with your board and provide this overview of some of the results from the 2020 decennial census. For the record, I'm Philip Bransford, the Communications Officer with the County Administrative Office. And as you've mentioned, we have a distinguished panel here to help out in over the next 30 minutes, starting with Charles Reinerson, who is the Oregon State Data Center Coordinator with the Portland State University Population Research Center. And then, as you mentioned, Ken Renschner, who is a Senior Planner with Land Use and Transportation will follow. And we'll conclude with Latricia Tillman, as you know, our Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer here in the County Administrative Office. I would just point out that not mentioned is Eva Haas, who is an incredible resource to us from Health and Human Services, who helped us put together this slide deck and is an excellent source of guidance about all things data. So shout out to Eva. And I'll just say one more thing as we get us rolling here is that before we get into the details, I want to acknowledge the critical role that our Complete Count Committee played in getting us to this day. As you know, Washington County had the highest percentage of response to the decennial census, 77.7% higher than any other county in Oregon. And I think a lot of that flows from the work that our partner organizations did with the county, including our cities, special districts, school districts, community-based organizations, all coming together way back before the pandemic. Well, actually, we were in the beginnings of the pandemic. And they deserve a shout out. So I just needed to acknowledge that. And the role that Amanda Garcia is now from the county's Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement also helped play as we worked together to lead that Complete Count Committee and all the cooperation that ensued. Next slide, please. So here's the rough outline of what we'd like to talk with you about. I'm not going to read through all of this in order to save some time here. But I'll point out that as we worked on this presentation for your board, we realized that this is a highly technical area and there's a great deal of nuance involved. We are going to take a pause, just so you know, at each title slide bulleted here to check in with your board to see if there are any questions. And then if there is more time at the end, of course, we can spend that doing a question and answer. But if that works for your board, we will pause at each major section of this presentation to make sure that we're capturing your questions. And then finally, I'll just point out that for the board and for the public, there's a lot more data that we've provided in the slide deck than what we're going to present today in the interest of time. So I'd encourage the board to take a look at some of the other slides that we have available in the PDF version of this presentation. And with that, unless there are immediate questions for me, I would like to hand things over to Charles.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Glad to be here as part of my office's public service role in helping people understand and access census data. And starting way back with constitutions, the census has been taken every 10 years since 1790, used to apportion the House of Representatives. And that became very important this time around now that Oregon has six members of Congress. It's also used by the state legislature in our state and by state legislatures or commissions across the country to redistrict U.S. Congress and state legislative districts. And there are links throughout this presentation. This one goes to the state legislature's redistricting page, so you can see the details about the districts. It's also going to be used by Washington County to redistrict the four Commissioner districts to balance the population. And there's many state and federal agencies that distribute funds based on, either entirely or partly due to the census. The professor from George Washington University has counted over a trillion dollars annually from over 300 federal agencies that are distributed using census data as one of the guidelines. Next. So the decennial census, the constitution calls for an actual enumeration. And that's why they have to go door to door to follow up with people who don't respond. And that's why they can't use administrative records. Some people want to say, well, doesn't the government know everything about me already? Why do I have to answer this? It's required in the constitution to actually count everybody. We still get questions about socioeconomic data, like, you know, what was the income, median income in the 2020 census? Well, the census doesn't ask about income. That was the long form, which hasn't been taken since 2000. Those kind of questions are now on the American Community Survey, which is a rolling survey, new results every year. And it has great detail on social, economic, and housing. Over 70 questions for, even if there's only one person in the household, there could be up to 70 questions. There's additional questions for each additional household member. Next. Here's a sample of what was on the 2020 census questionnaire. Basically, just the data that's collected is age, race, sex, household relationship. And they have to be very careful about trying to count everybody. We know that no census is perfect, and you may hear about the undercount. There is an undercount, and it's different for different ages and races of people, unfortunately. But you know, part of that is people aren't necessarily trying to hide. I think a big part of the challenge is that not everybody has a stable living situation. So they ask these additional questions, like, were there additional people staying here? Because you may not think of somebody as your household member if they're just staying there temporarily. If they don't have another place to live, they should be counted there. And there's a link to the full questionnaire. So next, I think that wraps up that section. Pause for a moment in case there's questions about those three slides. If not, let's take a look at the next slide. So when the census was first established, they counted three persons as whole persons and excluding Indians who weren't taxed. And then other persons were counted as three fifths of a person. So this was a result of a long debate and clearly points to where we were as a nation at that time. Since then, almost every census, every 10 years, there's been changes in the racial and ethnic questions on the census. And that's really interesting. I put a link to that. So it's something that evolves as our society evolves. And as the census gets input from stakeholder groups about what's important and how to count. We were very concerned, leading up to the census, that this could be a bigger challenge than normal because of erosion of trust in government. And but as we learned when the results came out, the way that the questions are asked and the way that the number of characters that you can put in on the specific questions actually sort of changes the results. And we'll see some of that a little later. Next. So the census takes great pains for confidentiality, and that's written into Title 13 of the U.S. Code. Individuals aren't supposed to be identified. And Census Bureau can get information from other federal agencies, like the IRS, for example, that will help them. But they can't share their information out with other federal agencies. Sad part of our history is that the Census Bureau did report to the federal government the locations of Japanese Americans during World War II. Next. And there's just a few headlines, things we were worried about leading up to the 2020 census. And I think there's a couple more on this slide as well. If we hit down arrow, yeah, headlines of our concerns. You know, as demographers, we want to make sure that everybody's counted. Ruins our models if they aren't. But you know, there could be political advantages, both foreign and domestic, to some groups of suppressing the count. So that was a huge concern. Next. And we see those concerns distributed differently by race. We know around this time, you know, great concerns about Asian hate crimes, racism, social justice movements, immigration, you know, these all affected the different racial groups at different rates about, you know, can my information be used against me? Next. And there's never a perfect time to take a census. 2020 was already going to be challenging because it was an election year. And then COVID hit right around the time that people were being asked to respond to the census. So ideally, everybody went online and answered the census, but we knew that wouldn't happen. So they had budgeted through July for follow-up, non-response follow-up, which involves mailing out actual forms and going door to door. That was difficult to do during the beginning of the COVID pandemic. So the fieldwork wasn't wrapped up until mid-October. That also affected the American Community Survey. There won't be county-level data from the one-year American Community Survey for 2020. But the delays in taking a census meant there were delays in the apportionment data. We didn't know how many seats in Congress each state would have until April 26th last year instead of December 31st, 2020, as is in statute. And the redistricting data that the legislature had to scramble to draw those boundaries because the public law, U.S. Code says that it's supposed to come out by March 31st, one year after the census, but it wasn't published until August 12th of 2021 at the block level. Next. And that was a lot of information in a short time, and I'd be glad to take any questions now or later. And if not, I'll turn it over to
Commissioner Trese, you're unmuted. Do you have something?
Okay, I'll turn it over to Washington County's own Ken Renscher.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ken Renscher with LUT. When we look at the three-county Portland region, we saw that it added roughly 195,000 people between 2010 and 2020. Population growth is a combination of two sets of numbers, births minus deaths and in-migration minus out-migration. Over the last decade, the population of Clackamas County grew by about 45,000, Multnomah County by about 80,000, and Washington County by about 70,000. Washington County experienced the largest percent increase in population of the tri-county region. And next slide, please. If we take a closer look at Washington County, we see that some cities grew faster than others, but each city grew in population over the last decade. In most cases, cities have expanded since 2010 through annexations in addition to the construction of new housing units. Hillsborough and Beaverton added the highest number of new residents, while North Plains and King City grew by the largest percentage increases. Next slide, please. Overall, the cities combined to grow at a slightly faster rate than the combined unincorporated area. Next slide, please. Washington County has almost a quarter million people in its unincorporated area, with nearly nine out of 10 of these people living inside the urban growth boundaries. Urban unincorporated Washington County, shown in this map in blue, would be Oregon's second-largest city if it were to somehow incorporate to be a city. Washington County has more people living in its unincorporated area than any other county in the state. And it's not even close. Next slide, please. And then this is where we can pause if there's any questions over these last four slides.
Can I have a question? This is Nafisa. Could you repeat the last statement you said about the unincorporated folks?
Yeah, so the unincorporated Washington County, we've got roughly 240,000 people in our unincorporated area. And the next largest county, I believe, is Clackamas County, and it's somewhere in the 100, 150,000 range. So it isn't, we have far more people in our unincorporated area than any other county in the state.
Thank you.
And I'll take it from here. Next slide, please. This, we'll see the exact numbers in the next slide, but this is graphically showing the increased diversity in Washington County between 2010 and 2020. The white alone, non-Latinx share fell, and nearly every other group, in particular, multiracial, Asian, and Latinx shares increased. And the numbers, let's move to the next slide to see the actual numbers. The way that the chart was built was based on these numbers or these categories, which are actually the most common way that you'll see race and ethnicity displayed, which is to identify each race, people who only chose that race and said that they were not Hispanic or Latina. So you'll see the, it's the white alone, non-Hispanic, black alone, not Hispanic. Of course, you can choose more than one race on the census. So take a look at, for example, the black alone, not Hispanic, 12,763. Well, before we move to the next slide, one point that this slide makes is that the total number of people of color constitutes 39% of the county's population. And that's an increase from the previous census. But again, black alone, not Hispanic, 12,763. Now let's move to the next slide. And black alone or in combination, 21,975. So big difference because this is more inclusive of each of these races. It includes everybody who identified as this race on the census, regardless of whether or not they also identified as another race. So this really is confusing to a lot of people, especially if you're developing rates. I was told by a journalist that there was a national report showing the vaccination rates, and they showed Oregon having over 99% of black residents vaccinated. And immediately I knew, you know, they're using black alone as the denominator rather than black alone or in combination. So you know, the people are being counted as black when they're being vaccinated. But in that case, they weren't counted as black in the denominator. They've been counted as multiple race, which is a problem. It looks like a small number, the multiple race, but it really affects the counts of other race groups. So that's something to be aware of. Next.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the previous slide, are you recommending that as we move forward, that this is the information we should be citing?
Well, it depends. And you know, the state of Oregon has a standard that they've developed called Real D, where there's actually, it's much more nuanced than this. There are other groups that are included, and it's based on the least common race. So a vast majority of people who check black and something else would be counted as black under the Real D guidelines. And that's something that I think will be more transparent and easier to use in the future. Our office is working with the Oregon Health Authority to sort of distill those numbers from the census and convert them to the Real D categories. So look for that in the future. But basically, yeah, if you're, people maybe don't like this always because it adds up to more than 100%, and that makes them uncomfortable. But yeah, if you want to talk about everybody who identifies as black, then you would use this black alone or in combination, for example.
So until we have the Real D breakdown, are you suggesting that we utilize this versus the other?
Yeah, if you're talking about rates, especially. If it's important to be more inclusive of everybody, then I would use this, except for the white alone, not Hispanic. There's a big, big number of white alone or in combination, you know, which includes everybody who's something else and white. But generally, if you're looking at the white population, you'd want to use white alone, not Hispanic.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your nuanced explanation.
So we're going to see a couple of slides showing the diversity indices. So next. And this is a metric that's defined by the Census Bureau. But I believe it was Ken from Washington County who calculated it for census tracts within Washington County. And here's the 2010 diversity, the likelihood of two randomly selected residents of a census tract being of a different racial or ethnic category. And if everybody in the tract were the same race, the diversity index would be zero. And so up from there. So that's 2010. The next slide is 2020. And you can see, you know, much higher diversity than in 2010. And all four of the Commissioner districts, which are superimposed on here, have, you know, very diverse populations living within them. Washington County is, you know, very multi-ethnic. It's not, you know, there aren't, with a couple of exceptions, you know, there aren't homogenous enclaves of diversity of non-white folks. But you know, diversity is spread throughout the county. And next. And one more section for me to tackle, themes in the data. So we've seen growth in total population. We've seen greater diversity. And the census has plenty of critics and people, you'll hear from community groups that they're not being represented or that they have many more people in their community than what the census reports. But one good thing about the census is it's standard across the country and across the county, across the state. So we can measure, it's the standard that's used by almost everybody. And it shows on the top of it, diversity, that if you compare the 2020 census with the 2000 census, 88% of the net growth in the county's population is attributable to people of color. The white population generally grows a little bit due to in-migration. But at least in the state of Oregon, because of the age structure of the population, you know, so many more white people in their 50s, 60s, 70s now. There's actually more deaths than births each year. So Oregon's white population grew a tiny bit due to in-migration, but not due to natural increase. Next.
And I'll take it from here. Thank you so much, Charles, for your part of the presentation and to the team. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Latricia Tillman, the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer for Washington County. And I'm wrapping it up here with the next slide, if we can go there. So why did we want to bring this census data to you today? I'm going to try to attempt to connect some dots here as we wrap up, and then we'll take any questions you have. But you have received high-level census updates before now, particularly with a focus on reapportionment of county Commissioner districts and the creation of new legislative districts at the state and federal levels. And I want to connect this briefing to other briefings that you've received on Design the Future and our One Washington County Initiative, which is focused on building a leading-edge, mission-focused organization that can better serve the community now and in the years ahead. And we feel that successful implementation of Design the Future requires data-driven decision-making. And the census, as was mentioned, gives us quality population and demographic data that's central to our efforts to assure equity. Disintegrating population data helps us understand how gaps in social and economic outcomes are often patterned by race in our community, as well as the magnitude, understanding the magnitude of those gaps. So as an example, one of our next steps for applying this new census data is to look at how the county can assure language access for current and potential service recipients. And that requires that we know the predominant languages spoken in Washington County so we can help prepare for that, to provide that language access service. And that's one of the things that we're looking forward to as future data gets released. As more data is released, we'll have a better understanding of where we can and can't do more analyses at the census track level, which the maps that you've seen were organized at the census track level. But often census data is often provided even down to the census block level. So we'll be looking at what we can and can't do with that more granular data. The 2020 decennial census has race, ethnicity at the block level. And so we can look at that. And we're also looking at additional data points to come from the American Community Survey, which has the more in-depth information, but it also won't be available to us until summer or so. And then what we're learning is that the complexity of privacy algorithms And then what we're learning is that the complexity of privacy algorithms, Charles talked about privacy in the census, but those, that complexity of those algorithms is delaying additional release of data containing age, sex, race and household data. So the slide shares a little bit of our initial thinking about ways we think that more analyses of the census data would help us identify and respond to community needs, which we know this board is very focused on centering community needs. And we'd like to engage your thinking and your ideas related to other analyses of population data that you feel may be helpful for you in your decision-making as well as to our operations. So I'll leave you with that question as well as any other questions you may be thinking about. And I'll turn it back over to you. And just before I do, say so much thanks and appreciation for the team of folks who put this presentation together. So next slide.